I'd like to call to order the special town council meeting for December 22nd. Can we all arise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mike Aurelio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swet.
Present.
Chris Salatas.
Present.
David Westland.
Present.
Beth Hernandez, present.
Okay, we have a quorum. And for item number four is a special commendation for Officer Daryl Schaefer. So I want to thank everybody for attending this evening. On the night of September 12th, the female driver fled the scene of a Lake County Sheriff's Department traffic stop, nearly striking several officers as she pulled away. Shortly after, St. John Officer Daryl Schaefer located the vehicle at the intersection of 101st and Kiamet Avenue. He and Officer Sidenbender attempted to stop the vehicle, but the female continued to flee into Illinois northbound on 394. The offender then went eastbound on I-80 back into Indiana. She then took the exit ramp to Kennedy Avenue and ended up in the retention pond next to the off-ramp. Officer Schaefer immediately sprang into action, ran into the cold murky water. When he got to the vehicle, he observed the female still inside the driver's seat and a five-year-old girl unrestrained floating in the backseat. Officer Schaefer immediately grabbed the young girl and pulled her to safety through the car window. Officer Schaefer was then told a second child was inside the vehicle, but he could not see her. He reached into the water near the floor of the car and felt a child's leg. He grabbed the leg, pulling a one-year-old girl out who was completely submerged in the water. Both children were pulled to safety and transported to the hospital in stable condition. In today's world, it is even more important to recognize the outstanding work of our public safety personnel. Thanks to the quick and heroic actions of Officer Schaefer that night, two young lives were saved. This is a testament to the character and devotion of Officer Schaefer. The St. John Town Council and the community is grateful for the amazing officers we have protecting us and would like to recognize them appropriately for their actions. Tonight, the spotlight is on Officer Daryl Schaefer. I would like to now have Chief of Police Stephen Flores give remarks and accommodate Officer Schaefer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. Good evening. Again, Chief Stephen Flores of the St. John Police Department. Again, I'd like to thank the council members for giving me this opportunity to speak before you and before the audience in attendance and before anyone watching live. Before I say any more, I'd like to call Daryl up, please. I've got a few things I want to say first before we move forward. So we're here tonight for a very special occasion to recognize one of our officers, Officer Daryl Schaefer, for his brave and heroic efforts that he displayed in the evening hours of Sunday, December 12th, 2021. And if I may, I'd reiterate kind of what you had talked about. That's on our award here. Kind of briefly go over the story as well. On December 12th, 2021, at 11:19 PM, the Lake County Sheriff's Department requested assistance with a traffic stop on 101st and White Oak Avenues in St. John. Officer Schaefer and Sidenbender responded to the call. Units were advised that the vehicle had fled the scene. Upon arrival, Officer Schaefer observed the suspect vehicle traveling west on 109th Avenue. He exercised good judgment by holding off on a traffic stop until Officer Sidenbender was close enough to back him up. As Officer Sidenbender closed on Officer Schaefer near Greystone and Kiamet Avenue, he was advised to proceed with stopping the vehicle. The vehicle then ran a red light, traffic light, and continued west on 101st Avenue. St. John and Lake County units pursued the vehicle into Illinois where the chase then turned north on Illinois 394. Officer Schaefer continued the pursuit no further north than I-8094 and eventually back into Indiana. The suspect lost control of the vehicle and drove straight into a drainage pond near the off-ramp for northbound Kennedy Avenue. Officer Schaefer exited his vehicle and immediately entered the frigid water at a great personal risk to himself. While Lake County units held the driver at gunpoint, Officer Schaefer erected a rescue of the two children, one of which was already underwater inside the vehicle. The care of the children was transferred to EMS personnel and the driver was taken into custody. Had Officer Schaefer not entered the water when he did, the children may have drowned. Officer Schaefer shall be recognized for his bravery and sound judgment, which led to the arrest of the fleeing driver and the lives of two young innocent children being saved. So, Daryl, as stated in what I read here, because of your bravery, two young lives were saved that evening. Being a father yourself, the three beautiful children, and a husband to a lovely wife, you risked your own life to save two others. What Officer Schaefer did that evening is something police officers do every day without hesitation, and I assure you, Officer Schaefer would do it again in a heartbeat. Not for the recognition, not for the glamour, not for the fame, and not for the free pizza that you generously given the other night for you and your family, but because you and every officer on this police department would do it again because that's what police officers do. This is what we signed up for, knowing there are extremely high risks involved, sometimes including losing our own lives, risks such as one that you took that night. Each one of these officers here tonight and across this country go out and do it day in and day out to protect the citizens of this great country, and we do it with honor, courage, dignity, and respect. And because of that, and because of you, Officer Schaefer, the guardian angel to those two little girls, they are both living and healthy, and that an eight-month-old baby girl, she will live to see her first Christmas in just a couple of days. Hopefully, that night will never be a memory to those girls, but it certainly will be for Officer Schaefer forever. And when you think about it, Daryl, remember that God put you exactly where you needed to be that night. You saved those lives without thinking twice. Thank you very much for a job well done and for your extreme bravery. And as your chief, I cannot express enough how proud I am of you. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call his family up.
Okay, the police department throughout the year recognizes officers for the great work that they do on a daily basis. In our general orders, there are five different awards an officer can receive, the greatest and most prestigious award being the Medal of Valor. The Medal of Valor defined by our policy is when an officer exhibits an outstanding act of bravery or heroism, which places the officer's life at great risk and/or results in a saving of a life. That definition fits what Officer Schaefer did to a T. Therefore, it's my great honor to present to you, Officer Daryl Schaefer, on this 22nd day of December 2021, the St. John Police Department Medal of Valor Award. Officer Schaefer will be only the sixth officer in the history of St. John Police Department to receive this distinguished award. Congratulations, Daryl, and well deserved.
Yes, that would be good. We could come up front for some pictures as well.
Sure.
All right, and then one with the officers and then...
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great. So we'd like to invite you guys to stay for the meeting, but if anybody came here just to see the accommodation and presentation, feel free to exit if you like.
It's been forwarded to Chris as well.
Okay. Okay, item number five is public comment. The only thing we have signed in is Jeff Slaven, submitted by email. Beth?
Jeff Slaven of 9153 East Spring Hill Drive. To whom it may concern, the St. John Town Council Facebook page was established this April 29th, 2021. Until very recent, December 2021, the unknown administrators of this page have gone back and restricted commenting on posts that were for information for the citizens, such as road closures and various events. Upon reviewing the page in the last four days, commenting was shut off on posts that had existing comments that were completely appropriate and non-threatening. A post that was made a few days ago had a day date error, and one person made a comment, and after that one comment was made, the commenting was once again shut down. A new post was made this Sunday stating that the St. John Town Council was only an informative Facebook page and that no comments will be allowed to send a message if you had any questions or comments. I have since sent two messages to the unknown person behind the St. John Town Council page asking directly who the administrators were for the said page. I was completely ignored on both very respectful, non-threatening messages. The two responses from the town council page did not include any names of responding individuals as I also requested. I have researched hundreds of state, local, and federal Facebook pages, and not one prohibits commenting on informative pages, as the St. John Town Council has chosen to do. I feel this is an infringement on 1A rights, as you allowed commenting on specific posts. And after a few comments were posted, you block others from commenting on posts where existing comments existed. My assumption, and I could be wrong, is that all public government Facebook social media pages are designed to be informative, so why would this town council, except Wayne Pondinas, who states he has no page access, have any informative social media government page like the entire country and decide eight months after creating the page to start suppressing the voices of U.S. taxpaying citizens? Why is a picture including Wayne on this page if he isn't allowed to access it? Is there something this town council is hiding from, or are you afraid of transparency and accountability in a public social media setting? Is this how the town council values the 1A and freedom of speech?
Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
Okay. All right, we'll go on to item number six. There is some old business that was to be brought up last month, which regards to our town manager, Chris Salatas. As part of his offer letter, there was to be a six-month review, and at the end of the review, it would give him a raise up to 5%. Mike Schilling and I did the review and are recommending the 5% raise effective December 1st. And do I have a motion to support that?
So moved.
Second.
All questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is passed, five to zero. 6A is to consider granting a special exemption to allow an accessory use building, which is an open memorial pavilion within a C1 zone. Mr. Salatas.
So the ordinance or consideration was put before you at your last meeting. However, at the time, the BZA did not approve their minutes because they did not have them completed. The minutes have since been completed and unanimously accepted by the BZA. So I recommend considering granting the special exemption as presented by the BZA.
Okay. Questions or comments?
That's just to let them allow to do it, and then building and planning will take over all the engineering things and whatever has to be done.
Correct. You had mentioned at the last meeting that there was no engineering stamp. The engineering stamp will be presented to the building and planning.
Our job is just to allow it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. If nothing else, all in favor signify... I'm sorry, I need a motion. Motion to grant special exception to 9615 Kiamet Street.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Ordinance 1747, which is an ordinance adopting the 2022 salary ordinance. Mr. Salatas, we had this in front of us last month. We made some modifications to it. Anything that we needed to be highlighted there?
There were changes to the town manager and three or four other positions to reflect what they will be receiving with a 3% raise. There was some numbering issues that were corrected and some class numbering issues within it and some numbering issues within the classifications that were corrected. There was summer help added into the Parks Department at $12 an hour. And then the uniform allowance for the Fire Department was made to be identical to the police departments. And then there was a correction on the firefighter, paramedic, and EMT, the salaries, using a methodology of dividing the suggested $3,000 pay increase by the number of hours worked, converting FSLA into straight time, adding that into their time that they work, to come up to about, I think it was 97 cents an hour increase to their base pay of $21.88.
Okay. Anything else in there?
There have been a lot of reiteration through the last two weeks, but I believe that's the big ones.
Okay, so this is reflecting basically a 3% increase across the board with the firefighters receiving an additional $3,000. Is that correct, as far as the numbers go?
Correct.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I'm okay with the Fire Department getting their 3,000. They're 3% and a longevity. I'm okay with what we just passed for Chris. I understand how that is part of his contract. On the last meeting, it was virtual, and I said that I believe that the rest of the people, police, clerical, Public Works, and Parks should get a 6% raise. Because the way you look at the scale, there's a little bit more here, it's a little heavy. So if we give them a 6% raise, that would even that out. And I think I was approached by different departments, different people, different employees, saying that they didn't think that was fair. I get it. The cost of living went up, that would help. Social Security has given a 5.9% raise. I think these guys deserve it. The Fire Department, they got their base salary raised because when they go to retire, they're going to use that base salary for when they retire. So they accomplished that. I think what's happened in the last year and a half in this town with Public Works, our police, our fire, everybody doing their job, they well represented us. This is a good time with COVID. What the workers did through COVID, police, fire, Public Works, clerical, working through the storm, I'll call it, working at home, I think that it would behoove us not to support these people and do that. I know, Mike, when I, councilman Aurelio, when I said something, when I was in Florida virtual, you had mentioned something. Did I check with somebody? And I said, no, I didn't understand what you said because I was in a car and I was by a party. So I apologize for that. I checked with Baker Tilly. Right now, it's coming out of the general fund, this raise, but with Eric Walsh, he said it would come out of like eight different funds. So you're not putting a burden on the general fund, you're taking it from different funds, and I think it's doable. Other towns, I've had newspaper articles showing me that they did bonuses, plus, you know, a COVID bonus plus the percentage raise. I think it's well worth it, and I think we should look at it. You know, look at the snow removal, leaf removal, what the Fire Department did just a few days ago with a house fire. Look what Daryl Schaefer did. Outstanding. We got outstanding workers. So I think that would be a good thing to do. Again, the FOP is with the Fire Department. Years ago, we let the Fire Department become unionized. I think if this doesn't work, then maybe we should unionize Public Works and give them a good contract because they do the same, well, not the same thing, but their job's what they do, you know? Shift work and everything else, I think they've kind of fallen neglected a little bit. If we can help them out, that's what I would like to do. I would like to make a motion to amend 1747, if I can, to add the 6% raise for Public Works, Police, Parks, and Clerical.
So not for Fire?
Well, Fire is already getting 3,000 plus 3% and longevity.
Well, we gave Fire 3,000.
I don't think we think about any other department. If you look in the salary ordinance, even in Public Works, there are areas for them all to progress already in the salary ordinance. This is a... I'm not trying to be cheap by giving employees a 3% raise, but 3% is a good raise. You know, inflation has gone up, but...
Well, Social Security is giving 5.9%.
So can I add to this?
Sure, Mike, go ahead.
Wait one second.
And I value every employee.
Go ahead and finish, Mike.
I value every employee. I think, and also later in this very next thing, we're bringing up a longevity pay, which pays yearly a stipend all the way up to 20 years, which promotes people to stay here longer, and that...
Well, I think with longevity, longevity can get taken away at any time. So at the end of this year, when things go bad with the town, we're going to take longevity away first. A raise is guaranteed, whether it's 3%, 6%, you're not going to be able to take that away from the employee.
There's nothing guaranteed in life.
Well, no, I get that, Mike, but you were a part of that, and it wasn't...
I worked in Public Works for 15 years.
In '08, they took away...
I value them all. I value everybody.
Okay, well, calm down.
Mr. Aurelio, you had something to say?
I do. So we, the town of St. John, we are restrained by our revenue. Indiana state law allows for approximately a 3% increase in our revenue this year. I would like, I'm sure we'd all like, to give larger than that increases to our employees, all of them, including Fire, Police Department, Public Works. But we would be taking money, we would be deficit spending out of different funds that would be greater than our increase in revenue. And our employee, our spend on employees is about 24% of our total budget, which means all of our other costs to our town, like trucks and equipment, fuel, steel piping, concrete, rebar, asphalt, computer software, hardware, truck repair, Parks equipment, street lights, insurance, health, liability, all of that is growing, going up approximately the rate of inflation, which is double our 3%. So if we give more than that, on the other side, we'll be further putting our town finances in jeopardy. Also, we have many projects that need funding in this town. So 93rd and 41 intersection improvements, that will likely go up higher than the rate of inflation. We have Parish and 231 intersection, which is a state road, but we are responsible for those approaches on both sides. We ought to pay for those approaches. Klein and 231 is a dangerous intersection, which is a state intersection, but we are responsible for the approaches. Klein Avenue extension, cost will probably go up. We have to improve our state, our Parks program by... We're looking to purchase property, which will likely go up more than the 3%, probably 6% maybe. We are desperate in need in this town of sidewalks and bike paths along Parish, White... Amen, right? Parish, White Oak, 85th, 93rd, Joliet, et cetera, bike paths and sidewalks we need money for, additional equipment for resources like our Fire Department, our Police Department, Public Works, Parks, all these are going up faster. Again, I understand that we are in an inflationary period, and it's more damaging because the town is capped at 3%. So I believe what I would like to, what I would propose, and I think elected officials should lead by example, we're servant leaders. So what I would propose, and I understand the salary ordinance, we should give, we need to give our employees a 3% increase, we should give that, that is our rate of increase. I also believe that we are losing high-quality firefighters to other local towns. I think we need to do the additional 3,000 in the longevity program. We have money for some things, but not all things. So what I'd like to propose is accepting, accept our salary ordinance for 2022 with the amendment.
There is a motion on the floor.
Okay.
So your amendment is out of order.
I'll go after it.
Well, can I just, I don't, we've been talking for a little bit here, and it's all kind of been out of order. Was there, I don't believe there was a motion to adopt 1747. So when Wayne made a motion to amend it, it was probably a little premature, so that motion, the way it should go is a motion to adopt it, a second, and then Wayne, if you want to make your motion to amend, then at that point, you would do that, and if you get a second for that, then there would be a vote on your amendment first, and then a motion on the adoption.
Thank you, you're correct. So we need a motion, first of all, to adopt ordinance 1747 on second reading.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance 1747 on second reading.
Thank you, Mike. Is there support for that?
Second.
Okay, now we can, now we can get in discussion.
Now I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance 1747 on the second reading to add the 6% raise for Public Works, Police, Parks, and Clerical.
Okay. Is there support for that? No support for that? Okay.
All right, I would like to make the motion.
That fails, lack of support.
I would like to make the amendment to freeze all elected official salaries at 2021 levels, which would be town council president not to exceed $19,339.31, town council members not to exceed $17,185.27, and clerk treasurer not to exceed $94,286.92.
Okay, so your motion is to have zero for elected officials?
Yes.
Is there support for that?
Second.
Comments or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, this is the motion.
This is the amendment, right? So you're not adopting the ordinance yet, you're just adopting Mr. Aurelio's amendment?
Amendment, right. This is a vote on the amendment, whether it goes up or down. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Well, that is three to two, so that does pass. Okay. So at this point, then, we've got a motion, we've got an amendment, and we also have to now act on adopting ordinance 1747, correct?
You need...
The vote.
Yeah, you need, if there's any discussion on 1747... Yeah, you need, if there's any discussion on 1747 as amended, and then it's a vote on it as amended.
Okay. Any other discussion then, on the amendment? On the amended salary ordinance? Okay, so no further discussion, so all in favor of adopting ordinance 1747 as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
That is approved four to one. Item C is ordinance 1749, establishing the longevity program for all town employees. Mr. Salatas?
As you stated, this is a ordinance to establish the longevity program for all town employees. It will be calculated as read, all full-time employees shall receive, it will be paid longevity compensation in the first pay period for the month of December every year. The longevity pay shall be calculated for each employee receiving $125 for each full year of service, up to 20 years of service, and then after 20 years of service, each employee shall receive paid longevity of $2,500 to be paid out of the general fund.
Okay. Questions or comments? Then I will entertain a motion on ordinance 1749.
A motion to.
Consider.
Consider ordinance 1749 in first reading?
Is there support for that?
Second.
I'll second that.
All right, questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay? That is, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. So that is approved five to zero. Since that is unanimous, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1749?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 1749.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? That is approved five to zero. Next is ordinance 1750, which is an ordinance amending number 1696, the Town of St. John Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual for Full-Time EMT Firefighters Time Off. Chris?
So this is an ordinance drafted based off the recommendation from the Safety Board. As you can see, it addresses vacation hours per year's worked for the fire department in Section D. In Section B, it addresses throughout the calendar year how holidays can be used for the fire department. Again, this was on recommendation of the Safety Board.
Okay. Questions, actually, is there a motion to consider ordinance 1750 on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Questions or comments?
I was going to say, I want, I'd like more time to read it, but you guys can vote.
Well, it's on first reading, so.
Let's get it on for first reading then.
Okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay. So that is considered, okay, so we'll put that off until our next meeting, and you have a chance to review that, Wayne?
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any questions on it, or?
No, I just seen it, just came through, like, okay.
All right. Item E, Resolution 2021-12-22, which is a transfer of appropriations from the civil Actually, these next three, E, F, and G, are all resolutions authorizing transfers, appropriations. I didn't get these until four o'clock this afternoon. I would like to be able to review these.
You do know why you didn't get them till four o'clock in the afternoon?
Well, I know why, I know why I didn't get the vouchers, but I don't know.
Because you said you were going to be on vacation for December 29th.
Yeah.
And you requested that the meeting be moved up to December 22nd. I sent an email to the town manager's office December 17th stating that these resolutions, dockets won't be coming to you until today because you made my office work like dogs for the last week to prepare for this meeting, for you to sit up here and say you're not going to pass it.
I told you we would meet on the 29th. I told you we can meet on the 29th to handle any appropriations that were needed to be done.
Okay.
So I.
Katie, you spoke to him, is that what he said?
No, he said he wanted to have it as a second if it was possible because you were going to be out of town. And Andrea was there too, and he talked about it, and I said I would let him know he had to figure out what to pay him and all this, everything else that was going to happen. It doesn't happen overnight.
I understand that, that's why I said at the last town council meeting.
Whatever, Jerry.
Yeah.
It's your story.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion on Resolution 21-12-22.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2021-12-22.
I'll second that.
Okay, questions or comments?
I don't have any.
No, I'm going to, I need to look it over.
You know, for me, I've yet to see this document.
Check your email.
Well, I got, it came over at four o'clock, right, it came over at four o'clock.
Check your email. That's three hours before the meeting.
Right, that's three hours before the meeting.
Bonnie, you haven't checked one other resolution this entire year, or the last two years.
I haven't?
Who's that directed at?
You have comments to me?
I do.
I look at everything before I vote on it and pass it.
That's why you want to pass things with all sorts of errors?
I don't do the calculations when it comes to, I didn't check to see if you added all these correctly. I don't have those numbers.
I didn't mean added them correctly, they're even transfers.
So I'm just saying, for me, I'm not comfortable voting on this.
Then don't!
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what happened.
Then don't!
Can I speak, please? I don't know what happened with behind this, but we did get it at four o'clock, and I haven't seen any of this stuff yet.
Then don't pass it.
Thank you. That's good advice.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2021-12-22. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Nay.
Nay.
Last time my office works like dogs to prepare for a meeting so you can go on vacation.
I have Resolution 21-12-22A, which is authorizing a transfer of appropriations on sanitary. Since it was only one item, I did get a chance to review that one a little bit closer. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-12-22A.
Is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Abstain from that.
Okay.
Do you have a personal conflict that you're abstaining for?
I just haven't read it. I haven't seen it.
You haven't read one line?
I haven't seen it yet, it came at four o'clock. I'm just telling you what it is. Excuse me.
Come on, civil. Please. All right, so that is adopted. Did you vote yes or no? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I voted no.
No, okay, so that is approved three to one. I have Resolution 2021-12-22B for the Water District, which is appropriation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-12-22B.
Is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
No.
No.
That is approved three to two. Item number H. Resolution 2021-12-22C, which is authorizing a transfer of funds. Beth, any comments on this one?
No.
Okay. Chris, anything to add?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-12-22C.
Thank you, Wayne, is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay?
No.
That is approved three to two.
Two of you just didn't approve to have your CDBG project funded.
All I'm asking to have is in a timely manner. Whatever is in the past, and please save.
You're a piece of work, you are a piece of work.
Please save it, please save it, Beth. It's not unreasonable to want something before four o'clock.
It's not unreasonable to expect, it is, it is unreasonable to expect the amount of work that my office did and other departments to prepare for a meeting that you guys asked to move a week earlier, and then you're going to sit up here and not pass things.
It's unfortunate, the background of that, but it's still unreasonable for me to vote on something I haven't thoroughly read that came across at four o'clock. I think that's reasonable. I'm not sure why.
Oh, you didn't read the five-year plan?
I don't understand why you're so mad about that.
So you didn't read the five-year plan where it clearly specified how you were funding your CDBG project?
Why are you so angry?
Because you make me angry.
That's enough.
Or actions make me angry.
All right, we move on to item number I. Ordinance 1742, which is authorizing an increase in the annual business license fee. Chris?
So this is an ordinance increasing the annual business license fee to $75 from $25. It establishes the penalty for not renewing in a timely fashion to $25 per month for the month of violation, and it, I believe, takes effect February 1st of 2022.
Do I have a motion to consider ordinance 1742 on first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike, questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? That is approved five to zero. Since that is unanimous, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1742 on first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
Support.
Thank you, Wayne, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? That is approved five to zero. Item number J is ordinance 1751, which is an ordinance amending ordinance 1491, which is an addition of stop signs to section 13-1007B. Chris?
So this is an ordinance that amends the previously stated ordinance, that adds the stop signs into our inventory, so that way when, when we put stop signs out at intersections, officers can write violations for not obeying those said stop signs.
Okay. Do I have a motion to consider ordinance 1751 in first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Mike, and Wayne. Questions, comments on this ordinance? Then all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? That is approved five to zero with unanimous vote. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1751 in first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? That is approved five to zero. Item number K, consider donation of haunted house items to the Cedar Lake Knights of Chris?
So this item was brought up at the park board meeting, the last park board meeting yesterday, by Tyler McLean, the park superintendent, and it was also brought up to me by Gabe Hernandez, the maintenance foreman. That, the town has not done the haunted house for a number of years now. This equipment is taking up space that's needed in our pole barn, and that they'd like to donate it to the Cedar Lakes Knights of Columbus for their haunted trail. As we can tell, this equipment has zero value to us, therefore, we'd like to dispose of it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to consider donation of the haunted house items to the Cedar Lake Knights of Columbus?
I'll make a donation, I'll make a motion to donate the unwanted haunted house items to the Cedar Lake Knights of Columbus.
Thank you, Mike, is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? That is approved five to zero. Item number L is consider acceptance of a performance surety for the gates of St. John, unit 22B, in the amount of $16,610.0. Chris?
Our director of building and planning, Sergio, has reviewed this as long, as well as myself, and we recommend, and the planning commission recommends, accepting this performance surety and set them out.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the performance surety bond for the gates of St. John, unit 23B?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike, questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, say nay? That is approved five to zero. Item number M is to consider acceptance of a performance surety for the gates of St. John, unit 26B, in the amount of $16,280.0. Chris?
Same as the last one, the Sergio has looked at this, the planning commission has given a favorable recommendation, so we recommend accepting it in the amount to state it.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the performance surety for the gates of St. John, 26B?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike, is there questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? That is approved five to zero. Item number N, consider release of the surety bond for Summerland Estates Phase 2 in the amount of $309,838.62, and accept the replacement maintenance guarantee letter. Chris?
So Sergio and I have looked at this and talked it over. We would like the, the council to defer this at this time. Instead of receiving a maintenance guarantee letter, we would like to receive a maintenance bond that's good for two years, and I believe Sergio has spoken with the developer, and they're in agreement of that, it satisfies our, our town ordinances.
Okay. Do I have a motion to release the surety bond and accept the maintenance guarantee letter for Summerland Estates Phase 2?
So moved.
Is there support for that?
Second.
I'm sorry, what I would do that?
Motion to defer.
I'm sorry, yes. Brian, would you?
Sure, I'll.
Remove your motion, and Mike, would you?
I'll amend my motion to read for.
Well, if you amend, then we've got.
We're not amending.
Okay.
So the first thing that's got to come off is the second.
Remove, yes.
So Mike said he would remove. I'll remove my second.
And Brian will remove his motion.
I'll remove my, uh.
Motion.
Motion.
Okay. So is there a motion to defer?
I'll make motion to defer.
Thank you, support for that?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor signify, I'm sorry, questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? That is approved five to zero. Item O, item O is the 2022 Plan Commission Appointments. Brian, since you're the liaison to the Plan Commission?
The Planning Commission meets approximately twice a month, normally, one study session, one working session. This year, there's five seats open, and I propose putting back Yolanda Cardona, who already has been for the last few years, and Bob Burleson, who's been on it for quite a few years, John Gill, who is our planning director, Jason Vlasic, who is our electrical inspector, and Bob Velos, who's going to start employment the 1st of January. He's the returning Water Department. He's the returning, um, water department head.
So we've got two returning appointments?
Right, and the three.
The other three are town employees.
Town appointments, correct. On a yearly basis, they're reappointed.
Okay.
Are there seven men on that board or seven people on that board, or is there only five?
Well, two aren't renewable. They're not due till 23.
Okay, so we're not going to go with seven?
Well, yeah, but they're already on the board.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I.
Only five need to be renewed.
Never mind, just, I apologize.
No, no, that's all right.
Okay, so the two expiring positions, you're just reappointing them. They've, they've reapplied.
Yes.
Okay. And then we've got three town employees that are appointed. Okay. So that's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have support for that?
I'll second that.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
I have no problem with Bob Velos, but he's no, he's not an employee right now.
He will be the 1st of January. That's what I said.
Right, that's, but I don't, how, how can you approve him today? He's not an employee.
Well, when he becomes an employee.
I don't, I don't, I'm not against him, but I just, I'm just.
But he starts the 1st of January.
That's a great question, Dave. What, can you answer that? It's a, it's a, the statute, and I don't have it up in front of me, but it's a limitation on the number. You can't go over three, so you could appoint him even just.
Cause I know they're going to have a meeting, and I think it's the third or the fifth.
The fifth.
So we do have to have somebody.
That's why we want him, get him approved now. So when he starts, my motion will be to put him on 1st of January, when he becomes an employee.
I like the appointment, but I don't, he's not an employer right now.
Okay, so do we want to, you want to amend the motion to include Bob Veloy when he begins his employment?
Yeah, that, that sounds good.
Okay.
So I'll ma, I'll make a mo, motion to approve the planning commission appointments as, uh, stated by Mr. Bla, uh, Blazak with, uh, Yolanda, Mr. Burleson, John Gill, uh, Mr. Vlasic, and Bob Velos, when he becomes employed at the beginning of the year.
1st of January.
I'm sorry, we need to do that as an amendment first, so you're making a motion to amend, um, to add the requirements for Bob Veloy to be employed first?
Right.
So will it be effective on his?
So it'll be effective when he becomes employed.
Okay, all right. So that's your motion. Is there support for that?
Second that.
Was that clear enough, Mr. Vlasic? Okay.
So the first thing you're voting on is the amendment?
So we're voting on the amendment first?
That's right.
All right, so all in favor of the amendment of putting the restrictions on Bob Veloy, um, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. That is approved, and now we will, uh, uh, there is a motion and a second on the floor to approve the appointments. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved five to zero. Um, item number P is to consider appointments of the members of the town council to the redevelopment commission. Which is the way it's been done forever. So do I have a motion to appoint the members of the council to the redevelopment commission?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
No. And my reason for that is, I sat here and I looked at it, and I said, we're, we're putting people from the town council on this board, and I, I made a mistake two years ago. I campaigned not to be, a councilman shouldn't be on any board. So I, I don't want to be on it, and that's why I'm voting no.
I apologize for not giving you a chance to do that before the vote.
Well, that's, that's all right. That's not a problem.
Okay. All right. Item seven, uh, town council. Wayne, start with you.
All right, on the, uh, on the parks department, we had a parks department meeting, uh, yesterday, and they want to have a meeting with the town council to discuss the purchase of Suncrest Church, um, for a community center. That's something that we all campaigned for. So we have that option of Suncrest Church, or maybe someday, some year, getting the 40 acres out there by Heartland Park. Uh, that was one thing that was brought up. Uh, Founder's Park, they poured some concrete, they got some sidewalk in, but it's still not, uh, ready. I think, uh, uh, May of next year it'll, should be finished. The SCADA system for, uh, the waterside is, is almost done. There's going to be a schedule for water main replacement. Uh, engineers got ahold of me, and I, I forwarded it to Mike, uh, from Public Works and Bob Davis. So there's going to be three or four things that they're planning on doing. The Monex Treatment Plant, that was, we spent four, 45, no, $54,000 there to clean that up. We now no longer have a place to dump our spoils. Uh, we, we, it's either going to be at Public Works or at the Saltburn. Uh, the VFD switches for wells three, four, and five have been ordered. Uh, that's a cost of $127,000. That's going to be hooked up into the, um, SCADA system. When that gets running, that SCADA system for the waterside should be done, uh, somewhere in March, I think, uh, if everything goes good. We, we just received, uh, I received word today that we got, um, the, the property for well nine has been purchased, but we, uh, they got the, lot has the, uh, the land, and we should have possession of that real soon, sometime next week. There was a problem with the deed or something, uh, bill of sale, so that's all going to be rectified. Well nine, the drill that, it's going to cost $145,000. Uh, we just got that. And then I got to say one other thing, well, the salary ordinance problems that we had, I know last meeting that we had, I was virtual. There were so many mistakes in that, that it was unreal, or problems, something that had to be changed. And, and everybody looks at the clerk's office, says, why ain't, that ain't done? There's, I mean, there were 17, uh, corrections on an email that I got, that, uh, and that was just a couple days ago. To get all that, it's almost a miracle to get it all right, and that's why, you know, other departments see that, and like, what, what's the problem? What's in it? It's the clerk? It's not the clerk. It's, you know, it's just how it happened. And for us to sign the paperwork, like Mike, you know, didn't want to do something tonight. He wanted to have clarification. Great, I understand that, and that's what, what had to happen with this. And last but not least, everybody that's in here, uh, whatever department you're from, have a Merry Christmas, have a Happy New Year. Thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate it. Uh, the police, the fire, everybody. I mean, what, what Daryl Schaefer did, uh, it, it represents this town. And I get choked up on it, but thank you.
Thank you.
It just makes you proud to be a resident of this town and help serve and, and, uh, represent this community, and I thank each and every one of you.
Thank you, Wayne. Mike?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody, uh, for coming out here. Merry Christmas to everybody and your families. And I appreciate all the workers that come out here. I was a worker at one time for the town. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, please. You want to add something, Dave? Yeah, I was just going to say, Wayne was talking about well nine. As you know, that was supposed to be transferred over. The paperwork was completed. He said bill of sale, and, and Wayne and I talked about this this afternoon, and I may not have been as clear. The deed was fine. There wasn't a bill of sale, it, you know, which is kind of a receipt. What, what happened was, is that, um, they rejected the sales disclosure form, which is a pretty common occurrence at the county. So we had to re-sign a new one, which I did yet, late yesterday, and I anticipate that well nine, that deed will be recorded. If it wasn't done already by the developer, it would be done, um, tomorrow or, uh, on Tuesday.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification, Dave.
Thank you.
Mike?
Um, our economic development committee is, uh, we have just started the process. Uh, John DeYoung, who's the president of economic development committee, and myself, uh, talking about, um, laying the groundwork for hiring a festival manager services for having two festivals in our town. Uh, we've been in contact with the South Shore Convention Visitor Authority about grant money and, uh, vetting and, uh, yeah, vetting services. So we are, we're, we're starting that process. That's pretty much what's going on in that committee. Also wanted to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and I also appreciate the hard work everybody does in town, all our workers. I'm grateful for what you guys do. Thank you.
Brian?
I'd just like to thank everybody in town for their hard work and wish everybody and their families a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
We got a one, somebody that wants to speak, I think.
Am I allowed to ask a question or speak? I was going to earlier, but I was nervous. If I can, please.
I suppose.
I would do it at, yeah, either the end of comment or the.
Yeah, when we're all done with the reports and stuff, then I'll give you a minute. Sure. All right, so you're done, so it's up to me. All right. Again, I wanted to wish the town employees and our residents of our town a Merry Christmas. Hope you have a wonderful holiday. To the employees, I, I would like to, when we started working on the salary ordinance back in late summer, and we looked at ways to try to, um, in, improve what was the situation we had, and also to bring in, um, the longevity program. I was afraid we weren't be able, couldn't be able to do both. In fact, I had a meeting with the department heads, and we talked about maybe reducing in order to get the longevity program and to have a 3% pay increase and to bring in the longevity program, I thought was going to be a wonderful program, uh, for the town. Uh, if you're disappointed with that, I'm, I'm sorry. That's, in, in my opinion, that's really all we can afford to do at this point. I think we need to be fiscally responsible for the expenses that may be coming up this year. So that's where I'm at. Beth?
So I would piggyback a little bit off of Wayne's statement regarding the salary ordinance. You didn't pass certain items that were prepared by my office, given that you wanted to move the meeting up a week because you wanted ample time to review the documents. However, when the salary ordinance came before you, you guys were super quick to pass it full of mistakes and correct calculations and so on. So to me, I feel that some of your actions are personal against my office, and that is what I don't appreciate when Mr. Aurelio asks, why do I become upset? I also don't appreciate that Wayne has asked multiple times for the 6%.
Uh-oh.
Increase for the employees or equivalent of what the fire department, um, got. But there, he could not elicit any conversation from any of you through email. I disagree when Mr. Aurelio says that we would be running in the deficit if our employees were to receive that 6% raise. In fact, Baker Tilly claimed the complete opposite.
Well, how is it if you only have 3%?
But, not your turn.
Sorry.
So are you saying that our taxes are the only thing that funds our town?
No.
No.
I'm just saying that 6%.
You don't have to be snide and condescending when you speak to me. It, it irritates me, and it makes me raise my voice. So please do not be condescending when you speak to me. Go ahead.
All I'm saying is that, uh, paperwork that we're going to vote on that makes a difference to the town and I'm responsible for, I need to be able to read before, and I understand the background, if there was something that happened there, but I got to that four o'clock, I did not have a chance to read it. It's, I don't think it's reasonable expectation for me to vote something through without reading it.
So remember that going forward, okay?
Both of us.
No, you. I don't vote. Remember, you make that very clear. I don't vote. So you remember it, okay? Um, I would also like to thank all the town employees. I truly appreciate all of your hard work. I know the endless hours that you all put in in your different, diff, different capacities. And with Wayne, I get choked up because I've been a resident here forever. You guys work crazy. Every department deserves to be treated fairly and equally. I just want you to know that I also appreciate you. Um, I would like to thank the parks, public works, PD, and fire department for all of your help with Christmas in the park. It could not have been a successful event without you. As I've been in my position for six years, we've been through a lot, like as a town and as employees, and as far as that's concerned, I couldn't be happier with the way that we're all working together and really came together and, I mean, I'm extremely blessed to be able to work alongside you every day, and so I thank you. I would, Merry Christmas to everyone. Please make sure you're spending time with your families over their breaks, and, uh, that's all.
Who keeps doing that? Somebody got to be sending that out.
It's Hammond, right? Okay.
That's it.
Chris?
I'd also like to wish, uh, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everybody. And to just update the council, the NDOT has accepted the LPA Klein Avenue extension that we submitted, uh, or that was approved, and then I submitted subsequently, um, the ADA transition plan update will be coming in front of the council, um, next week, and that's all I've got.
Is that for, uh, approval of structure point?
The LPA agreement was.
Right, okay.
LPA documents.
Mr. Westlin?
I don't have anything.
Okay. You had a question? Yes. If you could come to the microphone? Come to the microphone?
I'm sorry, I'm new at this, and I'm very nervous. My name is Andrew Cooley. I work, um, at the clerk treasurer's office. Correct me if I'm wrong on some of the statements or some of the, uh, numbers that were added in. But my question is, is, um, Chris, this is nothing personal. I, you know, I'm just going on the town manager. Um, you stated that by his contract that he gets a 5% raise, correct?
We gave him, we gave him a 5% raise, uh, effective December 1st, based on the contract that he signed, yes.
Okay, so, um, I don't know that contract, don't know if it's going to be public or not. Um, but there is a high, there is a do not exceed amount to hit, to a town manager's in the, in the town ordinance salary. He was not hired in at that, so are you giving that 5% on what he was hired in at? Or is it what he was, what the, the max do not exceed amount is?
What he was hired in at, not.
Okay.
Do not exceed on.
So the 5%.
The do not exceed amount doesn't go off.
Okay.
Right, well, you're, you're asking about the do not exceed is 100, yeah, what you're stating is the do not exceed was $116,814.10. He was originally hired in at 105, so we were well below that.
Okay.
But it's an 8% increase.
So then across, besides the, the fire department, because I'm going to be honest, I don't understand how that is the three, the 3,000 plus the 3%. I don't understand that. I don't do that kind of, um, work. So everyone else gets a 3% raise. Now, someone stated that there is room to grow, okay? I can only speak for myself that I have a class above me, okay? I can only get appointed to make that amount of, um, weekly or hourly pay by you. So how do, how does one move up a class? Or are you going to give the 3% on the highest class of that individual?
We, the 3% is across the board in all the classes.
Okay.
So if you would get promoted to the next class.
How do you get promoted to the next class, is what I'm saying. So I was told that it was, and under my understanding, is anyone that has a class above them to move up, if it's full-time or part-time, that is appointed by the town council. So how is, how can one do that if we can move up in class?
Well, first, ours office, the department head has to make your, uh, recommendation to the town manager. No different than any other classes. There's different classes in every payroll bracket.
Okay. Okay.
So as far as the 3,000, though, for the fire, we've been working on that since probably for the past year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because our fire department was so much lower scale than the other departments around, um, that we looked at what we could do as far as a raise, um, to try to elevate them, to at least get it closer, and then that's where the 3,000 number came from.
We lost several employees to the, around, surrounding towns because they paid better than we did, and the firemen left here to go there. So we lost five firemen.
It's not that they paid more, it's that they had higher certified salaries. There is a difference.
Okay.
So please stop saying that they are not paid hourly consistent with surrounding communities.
Yes, their retirement certified salary was not competitive.
And, and that's what they got now. They, they went up to $3,000 more.
That $3,000 was their competitive salary plus their retirement, their certified salary. salary.
Okay.
So, that, that's a, something down the road.
Okay, this is just, um, again, it's a personal maybe, um, I have been, I've been here my entire life, uh, I love this town, and, um, it's, it's disheartening, and I feel that it's a very unfair across the board, um, if you're gonna do something, and, and everyone contributes in their own way, no one's work, in my eyes, is better than the other, everyone works together and does their own thing, and I feel that when certain things come into play, that it's not, it's not, it's not even, and it's not fair, and that's my opinion only, take it how you do, but Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Okay, item number eight is a request to purchase, Beth.
I have a question.
Do you have questions? Do you want to payroll directly?
Yes, you may. Is it okay with you guys?
Okay with you?
I'm Jesse Baldazzo, um, I do the, uh, the payroll, um, and my question was, I believe you stated that in the summer, you've been working on the, uh, salary ordinance, um, I'm just curious as to, if you've been working on it for so long, how come we're not getting it until the end of the year, eight days to the end of the year?
This isn't normal for us, even when Steve Kill was here, we always worked on it together with other departments, and I think to kinda reiterate what's going on with, with Beth and what she said at the same time, this is the first time, we haven't been involved as much, and we're the ones that have to process it for you guys. This last time, in order to get stuff onto the docket, we had to rush for two days to get a payroll done, that could've had errors, and it would've fallen back on him and I, and it would've reflected on our whole office, nobody else, to get that done. So, we feel really unappreciated when that happens, I mean, you guys were talking about longevity briefly in one of the meetings I sat in, but that's as far as it went, you asked a couple questions, but to work directly with us or Beth, we're all supposed to work together in departments, and yes, you can get raises from each department head, but you worked in those departments, and you know sometimes that's biased, so you don't always get those raises from a department head. You have to luck out that you get it. I'm just saying, there's a lot of people back there that I know would agree with me on that, they've asked many times. And, to have different raises across the board, and to say it's because of a cap and this and that, wouldn't you wanna try to make it more even then, so that you can have the morale of your employees a little bit more even than saying, "Oh, we're gonna give these people this," and then, not to mention, that's their certified salary, that's employer taxes that are going up, that's their perf going up, way more than other people's perf is going up, that's a lot more money you're spending overall, and then, you know, I understand that you decided not to give yourselves raises in the, in the hindsight, but that's a very small por- portion, and Beth's, Beth's here all the time, and it just seems to me that it was a little bit more directed to her than you guys taking a hit for everybody else to get a raise.
Can I have a que, can I have a question? Can I have a quick question? You were talking about process improvement, would, any recommendations you have, I wanna write some down, what, what would be better for you guys?
Well, yeah, to work alongside with Beth and the payroll department, I mean, we didn't really hear about any of it.
Specific, specific, like, timing-wise?
Well, timing-wise, they used to have it approved and done in November, so like Jesse's point is...
Have everything to you guys by November?
No, you work with people. If we were working as early as August, we could've had all this...
More specific, 'cause I'm interested in improving process, for sure, so, you want all the stuff by what time?
Well, November is usually when the salary ordinance is...
But it's, but he's missing the point, Katie. It's not that we...
I'm trying to get it.
It's not that we want all the stuff in November, it's not that we don't, we don't want you to just dump this on our desk in November.
Okay, so what do you want?
We, we wanna be part of the process of the salary ordinance. You've been working on it since the summer, and we had no clue that it was being worked on.
I mean, there were departments that have nothing to do with payroll, being questioned and asked to help with the salary.
So, what date do you wanna be included by?
Well, we start...
Just ask a, you know, I'm...
Well, if you look at when in the history...
I've been, I've only, this is my first year, am I asking you a serious question?
Yeah, historically, and, I mean, nobody else is speaking up about it, they've always approved the salary ordinance in November.
In prior, in prior years, it's been turned in earlier than the last week...
When was it turned in last year?
I've said it so many times.
I don't know, we've worked on it in October, and the council approved it in November.
Right.
It's usually November when it's approved.
But we worked on it, together.
But we also worked on it together.
So, you just want more togetherness?
And not to mention, some of those things, like the not to exceed, like Jesse and I now have to pull some employee files?
No, they corrected that.
Oh, okay.
After, uh, uh, an entire morning yesterday of having to argue about it.
But it was all last-minute stuff, and, and the transfer resolutions, too, I, a lot of that, in my opinion, this is my opinion only, I could be far off base with this, but all those transfers resolutions, Chris, you should know this, too, I mean, a lot of them are based on APVs that people are spending and purchasing payrolls, things that were approved at prior meetings, so this is just a normal cleanup to do, and I get, you said you didn't read it, but in the same sense, you guys were approving all those APVs prior, so...
The ones I didn't vote for, I didn't see, I didn't see at all, they came in at 4 o'clock, to me.
So, you didn't vote, there were APVs you did not vote for this year?
So, the ones I didn't go...
'Cause I don't recall you saying...
I'm talking about the ones tonight, so...
These, the transfer resolution is to cover the payment of all the APVs that you guys have passed.
So, specifically, you know, the ones tonight, obviously, so, um, what is your idea, what is your thought of having a, what's your thought of having a finance committee? 'Cause I, I agree, I think, you know, improving the process sounds like...
No, thank you, no, thank you.
You don't want a finance committee?
I, I don't need you to come in and tell me how to do, run my office, or what we should do with our finances.
We would've just been appreciated to talk to us about how the processes work with our payroll program, to see how quick and easy it also would be to implement what you guys are wanting to do as well, because some of the things aren't that easy for us to do. And then, every other payday, you know, it's not just punching numbers for Jesse, and it's off, and he doesn't think about it again, it takes a whole week to process payrolls, and then the next week, you're doing other payroll things in between now, in trying to change, make changes to different things. So, it's very limited on the time, especially at the end of a year, for him to get that done in time for everything, but in the past, we've always been able to work with the council, with the town manager's office, months prior, to help that flow a little bit better, not a week before the end of the year.
And further delaying your transfer ordinances, like you did, will further not allow us to encumber for the departments, which is going to hurt their budgets next year, so what you think that you may be doing, in my opinion, personal to me and my office, is at detriment of every other department.
If I recall, and if I'm incorrect, I apologize, but if I recall, I think, didn't you ask for a 20-second meeting, so that we could get this stuff earlier, and, and I, and I, and I also...
Go ahead, you can pass it down.
I, I also did not consider that we were gonna eliminate...
You should love to see it.
Thank you.
Eliminate our 29th meeting, we're still planning a meeting on the 29th.
No, you told us, you told us...
Can you see that, Jerry?
That you wanted to eliminate the 29th meeting because you were go, not us, I'm sorry, you told Katie, I was not in the office when you came to visit, that you wanted to eliminate the 29th, and have the end-of-year meeting on the 22nd, so my office started working on this, department heads will recall, I believe you got a payroll request to please have payroll submitted by Friday, so that Jesse could start doing all the payroll, to get it on a docket, that most likely they're not gonna pass anyways. Same thing with me sending you the appropriation transfers that you guys needed, that they're not approving now, please get it to me by noon on whatever day. We have worked till 6:30, 7 o'clock each night, beginning on Friday, and a little bit of working over the weekend to prepare for this meeting, because you requested for it to be moved up. Mike, you can read clearly, when does it say that Beth normally wants the meeting?
It doesn't say anything, he's demanding anything, he's just asking for your involvement.
I say he demanded, come on, cut this shit.
He was just asking for your involvement to...
I came into your office to discuss it.
Actually, it sounds very cordial, he's just...
I never said it wasn't cordial, I never said it wasn't...
Maybe everybody should read it, so, yeah, it sounds fine.
I never said he had said that she wanted it wasn't cordial.
I don't know why you're assuming the worst of everybody.
We're done, we're done, we're done, we are done with this.
I never said that Jerry was not cordial, I said that it is a disrespect of my employees' time to make them prepare for a meeting this evening, for you to sit up here and not vote for the items that need, are needed to do a year-end, that is what is disrespectful. I never once said Jerry came in and demanded, or was disrespectful.
Hey, it's not reasonable for you to bully us into voting for stuff we haven't read, it's not fair, you're, you're bullying and telling us to, you know, it's not fair.
We are done with this.
Thank you.
We are done, we will move on. Item no, I'm sorry, thank...
I think she was just responding, Jerry, because you said, at her request to move it to the 22nd, and she wasn't requesting that. When you came in, you said it's on the 29th, you had thought that she always wanted it at the end of the year, the 29th, because of bills and appropriations, and I said, "I will find out from her and let you know."
And, and I said...
We talked...
She always prefers it later, actually, not sooner.
We, we talked, we talked about this after the last town council meeting, um...
During the last town council meeting, she did bring up all that, moving the meeting to the 22nd, was gonna have her office do a lot of work getting it up to the 22nd, I, that was when we set the date for the 22nd meeting.
Thank you, Mike.
I remember that part of it.
And I sent an email to the town manager's office, giving a precursor that documents wouldn't come until today, with no response back, so I, I don't know what to tell you.
Okay.
We tried to accommodate you and your request, I guess for no reason, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we will move on, thank you very much. Item number eight, just a request to purchase...
I got it, I got more staff.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm done. No? Hmm?
Let me see, staff or board? Yes, it does. You mind?
Thank you, Mike.
My name's Mike Boltima, I'm the water operator, I'm fairly new here, I'm not trying to make any waves. You guys talk about losing a lot of Fire Department guys, those are some of the hardest working guys you got back there. Like I said, I've been here a short time, I've been doing this a long time. It's outrageous, guys, I ain't never seen anything like it. About to lose half of those guys back there. See, losing Fire Department guys is a problem, you're about to lose half of your Public Works Department. That's all I gotta say, Merry Christmas.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
One response I will have to that, there is, for most of those guys sitting back there, there is more ways to advance right here in this salary ordinance than the 6% raise would've gave you guys anyways.
How, how could you say that, Mike? When those guys work overtime, and they, they get overtime, but then they get sent home to, for comp time, so they're losing. Some of them guys wanna work, and they want the money, let them work, let Public Works people work.
I have no problem with, I, I let them work.
You were one of us!
I was.
I'm, I'm sorry, I got loud.
Okay, okay, you don't have to raise your voice.
I get emotional about the whole town.
I get emotional, too, and I've been...
Police and Fire, everybody, everybody that works in this town, you deserve a raise, and this is the time to get it, and you should've got it. You should've got it! And you talk about saving money for 93rd and 41, who's gonna pay for that? The state's not involved, it's the taxpayer that's gonna pay the full amount on that, the state's not gonna help improve it.
That's right, that's right.
But you're worried about saving money!
I appreciate the taxpayer's piece for that.
That's right.
But the state should've been part of that, yeah, it's tax, that's taxpayer money.
I said, right, I agree with that.
I, that's not right, you're trying to, to pinch pennies now.
Not at all.
Alright, we move on, we have, we have, uh, RTPs, Beth.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, you have the RP, RTPs in front of you for your review for this evening.
Okay. Questions or comments on the RTPs? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to re, re, uh, the, the, I, the, I'll make a motion to approve the request for, the, uh, gosh, darn Wayne, the, the request to purchase is submitted by the clerk treasurer, and authorized her to pay the same.
Thank you, Wayne, your support for that.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike, questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay, that is approved 5 to 0. You have in front of you the docket?
I'd like to make a motion to pay the docket for $2,888,572.48.
Okay, thank you, Wayne, your support for that.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike, questions or comments?
Yeah, the bills probably can't be paid until those transfers are made, so...
No other questions or comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay, that is approved 5 to 0.